Please rise for your question.
I am the United States of America and the individual value which stands one nation underground indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome, everyone. Tonight, we're going to start off with the ambulance service. Do you have a comment on that, Jean?
Anybody from Tower Direct here? Yeah, there you go. Come on up.
Hey, I'm Scott, I'm part of Tower Direct. I'm one of the directors. Brad had a conflict tonight and asked if I would come to represent Tower Direct. Are you looking for a presentation from us or we're... I understand it was here to kind of answer if there are any questions you have.
If you have any comments for this month.
We don't have... Yeah, I would say our report, I think, was included. Certainly don't have any additional comments other than the report.
That's good. Everything's good. That's a good thing.
That is. That is. Any questions for us?
Yes, item B, the county, I don't know if you saw my email with Brad, but the county has sent out a survey that they would like one response from each municipality rather than sending it to each of you in an email than getting five responses back. It wants one unified response from the township. And there were four particular questions that I felt that the board could weigh in on. And of course, I didn't bring my cheat sheet, so hopefully I'll remember all four of them. One of them was a generic question about how the board would prioritize a study into EMS services conducted by the county. And they had gradations from "we don't support it at all" or "it's not a priority to us" to "it's the highest priority and I need some kind of appeal from the board" and I have a feeling I'm getting something from Mr. Bill Miller. Thank you so much. Yeah, so from minimal priority to highest priority, I need some kind of appeal from the board in the answer to that question. That's number three. Yeah, no, yeah, it's due on the 17th, the survey.
I mean, I'll speak first, I guess. I mean, for me, that's, it's a high priority. Like, EMS service, it's a pretty important thing, in my opinion. I have lots of other questions, but just in terms of this question, that's kind of where I'd say.
Okay. So that was more of an opinion question. They do ask for some factual information that I can provide, but in other words, how do we provide funding to EMS service? I can certainly answer that. One of the questions that the county had is what they had a question of, would the township support the use of GIS to have some kind of dispatch service for EMS? I think that the, my recommendation of the answer to that question is there's not enough information. There's GIS and GIS. The maps in the back of the room are produced by a GIS system. It's a mapping system. And actually, Mr. Donnell can speak to this much more than I can. But there are different ways to apply GIS technology. There are different apps that use GIS technology. So just saying you're going to use GIS is virtually meaningless. So my recommendation in the answer to that question is there's not enough information. And I see some nodding heads, but, board.
If I could just comment on that, I believe the context, I don't have any particular insight, but from the conversations that have been going on, even part of, that context might be around using GPS or mapping to dispatch the closest, the closest stations. We certainly support, you know, we, that's the way we try to operate every day. That obviously, most of the time, one of our ambulances is closest, but if it isn't, certainly the resident patient deserves a close payment.
And that's fine, but that still tells us nothing about how they would do that.
Absolutely, but I think that's probably the context of the question is my guess.
Yeah, the question, just for clarity, you said that asks, or says the CLG recommends use of geographical information systems, GIS. I mean, Jean's point, as somebody who does like systems integration, I need a lot more information. It could, that could be a very labor-intensive, costly operation to integrate that. Not only abstract, but I think getting ambulances to where they need to be as fast as possible, closest ambulance, yeah, absolutely, but we just need that.
One of the things that I saw in the CLG study is there was a comment about how the actual paramedics and folks like that, they didn't seem to like that. That was a little confusing to me.
What do you mean?
There was a comment in there about how that, I guess, the folks that actually are in the ambulances and stuff like that, they want some board of GIS. I don't really know any more than that. It just kind of said that. It didn't provide any support. Everybody looks confused, so.
I mean, we certainly, we use to actually map. We get latitude, longitude from the first capital one center. That's actually how we map to an address. So certainly that utilizes GIS, you know, information. But yeah, I think maybe additional context.
Yeah, thank you. One of the reasons you're here, and I wanted somebody from Tower Direct to be here, is that one of the questions that I can answer, but will become important next year, is which financial data do you receive from the EMS, EMS agency? We don't get any. So our contract with Tower Direct is 2024, 2025, which we're in, of course, in 2026. So sometime next year, there will discussions, I'd say negotiations begin about what 2027 and beyond is going to look like. And in prior contract, the first contract that we had with, at that time with Southern Birds, the cost per household was based on their membership subscription at the time. And the cost currently, very similar kind of context to that, although we did determine a more accurate number of households. The first few contracts were based on not accurate number of households, meaning actually in the township's favor. Now we're dealing with a much more accurate number of households and Tower Direct basically said we want $45 per household, which is very similar to what some other contracts are. It's not dissimilar to what's going on in other municipalities. However, if I could speak for the board preemptively, I think the board would like a little bit more of a discussion and context for financial discussions in the next contract going forward. And that was something that was also discussed in the county study that Mr. Miller was referring to. So if you could, you know, carry that message back, I don't know how that works with an entity like Tower Direct versus an independent ambulance service. But I think the board would like more information when it comes to actually sitting down and negotiating because ultimately, the cost is combined with other costs for dispatching and a couple of other things, and then it's converted to a bill. So it directly sets people's problems back.
Absolutely, and we're actually willing to share costs. We've done a lot of work around what it costs per trip and the cost of readiness. It's not just transport a patient and having an ambulance available if there's an emergency right now, right? Absolutely, and we probably, we'd work out a way that works well, probably willing to share kind of high level, you know, what our operation costs and then probably some costs directly related to the board.
Yeah. I would ask, too, like, to whatever extent possible, I think where we can tie those costs to the household, to an individual household. Because at the end of the day, to me, it's a question of the, how are we spending the residents of the townships' money, right? So if we can tie that data, that financial data to Joe, the residents of our township, like, you're getting what you're paid for, you're getting good service, and like, we want to, I don't think anybody out there is going to say we need to get rid of EMS. But just so that we can provide good context to the residents.
Absolutely, and being a super chip is an important piece.
Yeah, building on Andy's comment, I mean, I would say I have a series of all called data type questions. So it's not necessarily financially related, but it's along the lines of what Andy's talking about. I'm not going to rapid fire him off to you tonight, but I can get these, pass them over to Jean and then you can take some time to look at them. But just at a high level, it's going to be stuff around like, how many municipalities are you covering? What are they paying into the system? Your payer mix, breakdown and covered lives, I think, that kind of stuff. Just to kind of hone in a little bit, getting back to exactly what Andy's trying to do, to figure out how much we're paying to Comro versus what all the other municipalities around this are paying.
Yep, and I certainly think in Niagara, we're happy to share that data, certainly. We're respectful of individual municipalities and their data, but certainly, we're happy to share our overall operation quarters.
Thank you.
I don't know if the board has noticed, but last month, I did this just for fun. It shows you I'm somewhat of a nerd. I went back over, I don't know, a year or two, I don't know, more than a year of monthly information from Tower Direct, and I plotted a best fit. It's actually pretty steady as part of number of call. That little graphic was more for my own curiosity, and I was interested in since COVID, what has been happening. It doesn't speak to severity of call, and it also doesn't speak to additional mandates that may be out there on EMS services. So those are the kind of things that I just, as part of call data goes, one has to be careful, again, I apologize for using this word too much. You have to contextualize it a little bit with, but it's interesting how steady the absolute number of calls is from our, the market. Interesting thing. One of the questions that the county asks, and of course, it's the big question, is does your municipality desire that the county contribute funding to a study of this issue for, in other words, hiring consultant? Yeah, a Delta development, if you will, for EMS, hiring a consultant and spending some money on a study of this issue. And that's a yes or a no?
I mean, it's a yes or a no, I mean, I'll give a little context to the answer. I think this is, the crisis has been presented. This has been an ongoing topic, several presentations made to the boards across the county and across the state. I think in case we were township, we're less affected by this because we pay for an unnecessary. But I think it's relevant to us in that EMS has to respond. So to whatever extent, and I don't mean to sound chalice by saying this, but to whatever extent other townships or municipalities that can't pay private EMS are burdening the system, so to speak, that affects the outcomes for the residents here who are, we're paying, we're, we are all collectively paying for it. So I think it warrants further study, and if there's opportunity for efficiency to be driven in a more central manner, I think that's possible. Whether or not it turns out that way based on the study, we'll see. But I think I would support getting the data back.
I think you said that well.
Just to build on Andy's comments, the reason that this being conducted at the county level is because they want to see cooperation amongst municipalities. Because the feeling is kind of, you know, they can make recommendations, but if the municipalities don't pick them up and run with it, we're kind of spinning our wheels a little bit. So that's why they're sending these questionnaires out and they're trying to get buy-in from all the different municipalities across the county.
One thing from the commissioners' level is one of the things seems financially for EMS especially, is the fact that we use service. That balance of the check gets mailed to the patient, the person transported to the hospital. So somebody needs to drive into the lawmakers higher up than this level, that that needs to change. And that needs to go directly to the EMS service that did the service. Because these people get stuff, and I will say those people, it generalizes the statement, will use it, and it's like a revolving cash flow. Because services don't have the resources to go after that, while we do other things, and until that law changes, that's where a lot of the financial burden is at, on EMS. Because people are getting checks, they're cashing, they're never turning them over. They don't, so this is something from the local level to beat up on the state, to, you know, up the line, to get them to change that law that the service gets paid to the patient. Because that's where a lot of that money goes. After a while, it adds up substantially to the point where it binds down operational budgets on there. So just starting to add that from, if people want to add something, to get after some people, that's one of the important parts about what's going on financially. That's just not how, that is all of the service in the state council. Thank you.
With a lot of the smaller EMS service closing, how does that affect Tower? Are they getting more places that they can provide service? Or what happens to those places that are closing that normally are using that ambulance service?
Really, our challenge along this line is to be, that one is services closing, and the other is general staffing. You know, if you're having trouble having payment, getting payment, you're in trouble maintaining your service and maintaining employees and rate, pay rates and that type of stuff. So I was going to say earlier, we see our units in this township provide, while mutual aid is an important part of all of our operations, but we provide more mutual aid to the surrounding services than they provide to us. There's always expected to be some of it, but that's part of what we see is because we've generally been able to staff our units and keep staff or that type of stuff, is that we are, we are bearing that burden a bit more. To your point, we have to respond, call 911, we get dispatched, and we're never saying no. So we're still able to serve Comro, it's not, but the cost burden to that township.
Thank you. So would you explain your, your actual force then and ambulances to help, you know, maintain that?
So yeah, it's a balance for us because our mission really is serving the townships and serving Tower Health. So adding additional resources to take that off when we don't have contract with those townships for anything like that is really, it's a difficult position to be in. So it's really kind of a balancing act.
To Chief, to Chief Ian's point about this problem of it's the economic term, I guess, free riders, giving the check paid out to them and not paying for the service they've just got, in the back of their stomach or whatever. In your opinion, I guess, would perhaps centralizing it for, or sort of collectively as a county sort of bargaining unit empower maybe more le, or give us collectively more leverage to, to apply effort to that, solving that problem, maybe to lobby state clubs, I don't know.
So I think politically, so we are supporting legislation that is, that is being worked on, introduced, being introduced that standard these ambulances be scheduled across the Commonwealth. And I think there are six or seven states that have done this that say essentially 300 or 350% of Medicare rates is the standard rate that gets paid for ambulances for trips, and the check goes to the ambulance service, and that really solves this. What is the, you know, 300% of Medicare is really kind of the operating cost of ambulances. And so we get, you know, something that's a little bit above that, and we get the payments coming directly to us. If that makes us sustainable, that's really the legislation that we're supporting. The Ambulance Association of Pennsylvania and a bunch of other kind of advocacy groups have been. Yeah, we would love additional support. And so negotiating power. Tell you, so we're part, we're part of Tower Health, which is a fairly large health system. Obviously, not as much as used to be, but still a fairly decent sized health system. And we, we have trouble getting anywhere with the big payers on ambulance rates, even, even having the resources and size of Tower Health behind us. So the idea, the county, I think politically, I don't know, just a consortium, I don't know that the county together would get farther than people.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm going with, like, as an individual municipality, we don't have much.
And as an individual ambulance, right, they know, we at least have a contracting department that has relationships with these payers and say, you want to do with our help, business with Tower Health, give us better rates for our ambulance service, and we still really struggle to get anywhere near to meeting what the costs are.
Would you say, I guess, in terms of advocacy at the state level, where legislation, do you feel like you're making, you have made progress on that front? Or would collective, maybe bargaining units, I guess, just to would that lend support to the effort?
So I think it's political, it's political sport that's really needed. And I'll have Brad share the, you know, the work we've done as part of this kind of coalition to try to bring this legislation forward. I'll, I'll have Brad share that with you. But it's really a lot of, been a lot of our focus because we want to be sustainable. And generally, payers paying for the cost it does to care for people and transport people is really the number one way we get.
Speaking as a human being, I want to be successful.
Right, the less burden EMS is on taxpayers, the more it is paid for as health care. Yeah, that's really where it would like to be.
So I think the board may have answered the last question that I had for the board, and that is major barriers, opinions on major barriers you face while addressing the issues outlined in the CPLG report. I think legislation would be one of those issues, given the context of this study.
And I think there was a lot of discussions, I study around the rates that paramedics, the EMTs and so on, folks so forth, they're getting paid. I don't know what your folks are paying or are I asking, but it sounds like there's variation across all the different services. Some of the other services maybe don't pay as well. The study actually talked about he can make as much money at Wawa as you can as an EMT and some of these other services. So people are just kind of throwing their hands up and walking away. So I'm not sure if there's anything that's collectively going on in your industry or within Tower Health to raise paying and benefits and stuff like that to try and attract folks. That's a very broad, sweeping, general question I'm asking, but kind of from your side in terms of paying and attracting talent. Do you have programs going on there?
We do. So we pay fairly well. We're not, we're certainly not at the top of the pay, but as things go, we pay fairly well. We also, being part of the health system, have decent benefits, certainly not municipal benefits, but if compared to private, small private companies, our benefits are better. We also have done a lot of work to grow our, so we hire wheelchair band drivers and we're sending them to EMT school. We hire EMTs, we're sending them to paramedic school, and that's a big piece of how we are able to maintain our staffing levels. So it's work, it's money, but that investment in people has really gone a long way with this. And we are fairly well, I mean, I don't know that we're ever full staffed as the size of our organization, but we are fairly well staffed, especially compared to many surrounding agencies.
Building township in the first place, township. So we have an organization called PSATC, that's Pennsylvania State Association of Townships, which I'm very active in that. And that is on the agenda for these services, and we do talk to legislators. So we are working on it.
That's much appreciated. Really, is that I, and like I said, we'll share this legislation, we really think it's one of the, that the recruitment piece is an important piece, but it's often a subset, is if you can't pay people the right wage, it's very difficult to recruit. It's not the only problem with recruitment, but that's a big, big responsibility.
So thank you, everyone. Thank you, and thank you to the board for the discussion. So I will put the discussion together into the survey and respond to the county by the 17th. Thanks.
That's very much.
Did everyone have a chance to look over the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Certainly.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Donner?
Yes.
Mr. Pat Dorf?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Rau?
Yes.
Moving on to tax collector.
Jean? The main thing to note under this section of the agenda is that you can see that a lot of things have been coming in in April. It's the end of the discount period coming up, so in actuality, you'll see most of that in May because it comes in, it's deposited, the last deposits are made during the first week of May that are received in April. Also, the tax collector has a short period of vacation. She will be back before the end of April. There's a notice on both the upper and lower doors, and her dates are listed on the tax bill. There are drop boxes, both upper and lower, that the staff collects every, every day and date stamps. So, thank you.
Okay, next is public comments. Looks like we have just one person. One of my favorites, Mr. Ben Fisher. Come on, say your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Ben Fisher, 24 Halloween. I did watch a video on the steering committee and looking forward to an update tonight. This is just a bunch of questions that I'm sure your presentation is probably going to cover, but I'm going to give them to you rapid fire, and the ones that's sick, you can answer them, the ones that don't, collapse. So is the steering committee expected to be a long-term commitment? Means it's new to the township, it's an additional item that the staff needs to base it, so to speak. You know, they need to organize all this, send emails out. And if so, is there an expected timeline for when you think you can get the work done, like, say, by the end of your term or, or your, six years? At what point would it be safe to say that the value of the steering committee has been, and we can now disband? Is the existing staff able to handle that additional workload? So my understanding is somewhat limited about staff gets paid, but I think meetings, hours are probably considered overtime. So this would be not just an extra two hours, you know, it would be overtime two hours, so. If that's correct, can you kind of like provide a rough estimate of what the expected cost is to the taxpayer? And also, we got to think about, you know, are we going to recoup these extra costs? Sure, we all have ideas thrown around, and if we can all take them in the spirit of humility and accept that we all have the same ideas, opinions, I think that we would get a long range. So again, that there was I was just kind of wondering if we could have an idea of the cost burden for the taxpayer, for the community. It's a new thing, and new things always take time. So you're just beginning to say this, and maybe you don't know the answer, so maybe you say, I don't know. So.
All good points.
I think of the, for Jean, in terms of the burden costs in terms of personnel and overhead for the good staff and things like that. I think to your question about the extent of the duration or whatever, that the steering committee would be in place, I mean, Greg, you can probably chime in here, too, but I wouldn't expect it to be much beyond our engagement with our consultants, perhaps to some extent beyond that, to sort of help put the plans in, sort of what's come out of that engagement in conotion. So I would expect that this is something that's like now a pillar of the township that is meant to be extremely long-lived. Sort of a guiding force. The other thing I'll add with regard to your comments about differences and opinions, one of the things that I think that was done really well, and I had particularly, I'll say I had zero to do with this, I was regarding steering committees. It's, oh, listen, I think you saw probably in the video you watched, there are people across the political spectrum. It's not people of one idea. There's healthy debate between members of the committee. There's people that are, are well against independents, Democrats. There's people that are well against independents, Democrats, you name it, there are people who are members of uh sort of advocating for business, people who are advocating for the school board. There's a very diverse coalition of people who whose only sort of agenda is to further economic development of community township. And and just on that topic, I think it's not lost on, I think, probably anyone, but we we have, I think, what, the ninety point two mil?
It's a little less than that, but yes, there was a tax increase.
Right, so I mean, we have a healthy tax burden, you know, relative just to some of our neighbors. And I think that's the idea here is how do we improve services, improve the vibrance of our communities? And at the end of the day, we all want to pay lower taxes. I mean, that's what we're after uh in that effort. I think purpose of it is to get everybody's idea how we get there.
The the timeline to be exact is September. That's when the engagement ends, Andy's point. That doesn't mean everything stops in September. That's just one of the timelines for the Delta engagements over. They'll deliver a strategic comprehensive plan to the entire township at the end of that engagement. Then from there, there's going to be a series of other events that happen, some of them involved in township, some of them involved, and probably a lot of them will be outside of the township. Um, in terms of of the township staff being involved, I know Jean's involved. I don't know how much her staff is actually involved.
It it that Patty and I primarily, we're salaried, so there's no overtime associated with that. Evening meetings is what I've been doing for twenty-five years. Um, it it'll be weird someday if I actually have dinner at home. Clearly, that that was not to get sympathy, by the way. Um, uh, but uh it really is a straight-up cost for this is the cost for Delta Development, the sixty-three thousand dollar fee. Um, and and it to answer what I can of Mr. Fisher's questions. And this is not an invasion. It depends. Uh, it depends on what the final study says as far as any costs going forward. It's what they recommend. Uh, and even not just what they recommend, but what the board commissioners agree to do. They may recommend things that the board will not agree to. Um, so uh I'm sorry I can't directly answer some of those questions, but yes, the timeline is is pretty much set.
Yeah, so I guess to to your point there, Jean, like the costs that you're alluding to is not the cost of steering committee at all. It's costs that based on the data and and the what the engagement with Delta brings us, we decide that we collectively as as our elected board decide is worth investing in.
Yeah, and and to your question as to when all that's going to be done, it it's just like Jean said, it's a test, that's what we do. Um, you know, it, I'll just leave it at that because I don't want to stumble or anything, but it's going to depend. It it could be very lengthy. It could be the decade depending on what it is and and how, you know, widespread and how difficult. But in some ways, I think I hit most of your questions. I was trying to remember them all.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, moving on to the departments, uh, Mr. McPhie Hall. Let me ask you, would you like to go first and Jean may not join up? For me, Mark, you please.
I'm just trying to go first along.
You're never going to live that down.
Yeah, I'm not too happy about this.
So we get a notice yesterday from Penda uh that they will be doing repairs on Route Ten um Morgantown Road between Freedensville and five sixty-eight. Uh, they are signed out on the road. Uh, they say uh April eighteenth, letter we receive says April nineteenth. Uh, and like with everything, and we all know that very well, thank you for me. Uh, I'm not exactly sure what they're going to do. Um, they may be doing some pop old repairs and milling. Hopefully, uh, they won't destroy any of our infrastructure like they did in Lake Plague last year, um, two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. But we did go out and mark all their manholes today. Uh, Penda has been paying local systems, so um it causes a lot of problems, so. That's all I can tell you. If there are any complaints about Route Ten in the next couple of days, uh, as always, please call Penda to discuss with them. We are working on a passion list for the late spring and summer. Uh, we were dealing with the liaisons the other day, trying to get that firm up. Uh, we have a lot of roads during this repair. Um, and we can do quite a bit of work with our township forces with uh with field money and traffic impact money. Um, so we're working on that and uh as many of these are created with the weather, they might be working on that. Uh, and that's all I ask, man.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Winchester, what is the police department?
Good evening. So uh you all should have my report on your Zalit side and answer any questions if you have any in regards to that. One of the two items I wanted to touch base on uh tonight would be our civil service applications. The uh testing campaign uh has been ongoing. And the applications for the test are due back on the seventeenth. And the test will be this Saturday. So we we have received a handful of applications. I'm very comfortable so far in the amount that we do have and we've received. Uh, and we're hoping that uh the trend continues with years past with the last minute push for applications coming in the next two days. Once that testing is done, uh as the board knows and liaisons have told, uh we have streamlined things. And historically, in policing, testing process from the written test to the physical agility, to the oral interviews, and has taken upwards of three to four months. Uh, we uh last testing and this testing, we plan on accomplishing that within one week. So this testing will be this Saturday, and that will be the written test and physical agility test. And then the oral interviews will be scheduled for the following Saturday. Um, the applicant will walk out the test this Saturday. One of the past uh with a time for their interview, and they'll come in. And then as soon as that interview is done, it doesn't take me too long to score, and then the list is formulated. Uh, the list is certified, and then uh we talk to the, I talk to the liaisons and board. It's final approval on a number of potential applicants that we're looking to put on for hire. Um, so it's going well. I'm I'm happy so far, and like I said, hopefully the push continues the next two days. Anyone knows, uh, anyone that's interested in being a police officer, the application is on the township website. It's also on our Facebook page. It can be downloaded, it can be copied, just needs to be filled out completely and turned in. Uh, the other item I wanted to touch base on is this year we were able to uh rejuvenate a uh unit that kind of went dormant with staffing in the past few years. Uh, which when I say dormant, meaning the responsibility was spread amongst the entire department. But this year, I was able to um have an officer primarily focused on traffic, traffic enforcement within the township. The officer uh does double duty, so still answers all the calls, still uh counts for staffing. That being said, uh they're trained and and highly motivated in traffic-related uh enforcement and education within the township. Uh, aside from a number of uh guidelines that I've provided that officer, uh which by the way is Officer Nathan Benz. He's our traffic safety officer. Uh, which his uncle, on a side note, is also the traffic safety and traffic officer in Exeter Township. So a number of guidelines that I did give them, one of which was I'd like the reputation of Coover Township Traffic to be different and opposite um Exeter Township. Because everyone knows about Exeter Township, when you drive through there, even more than likely if you're speeding, you're going to get a loan, you're going to get a citation. Not that we don't want to do that citation, but I'd much rather take the educational approach with our traffic safety unit uh and uh enforce the traffic laws to have individuals comply through warnings and education uh as the first two options, alternatives prior to disbanding on tickets. Uh, that's not something that that I've ever been interested in in township. I think the board and Jean can attest to that. Um, so part of the initiative is going to be pushed out through our Facebook page, so everyone gets to know him. It took me a while to convince him, but I think I finally convinced him today that we're going to have a photo shoot so I can get his picture out there. Now, he he made me promise not to do it until he got a haircut. So he's going to get a haircut. We're going to get some pictures taken and a short bio to introduce him to everybody. Uh, one of the things he came up with, which I can't take credit for this, it it's an incredible idea, I shouldn't take credit for it, is uh he did create a uh an email address specific for traffic-related um information and complaints. So anybody within the township, anyone that has an email address, can email Officer Benz at traffic this email address, and it'll be off through Facebook if you don't have anything right now, traffic@cooverTownship.org, very simple, very easy. Um, that email address, the email will go directly to him. So anytime anyone has any information they want to share, uh any complaint they want to provide um that is traffic-related, it will be looked at and uh addressed by Officer Benz. So I think that's a great idea. Uh, I did tell him he's going to have to go through that email daily on a regular basis because there's going to be a lot of emails coming through, but that's what we want, and that's one of the things that we've always preached uh with Coover Township is, you know, when people stop calling us, that's when I start to get really nervous. So we want information, we want people to call us. It's not, no one's ever a bug to us. Um, that infamous, I don't want to be put on the list because I call too much. That list is not it's not real. Uh, there is no list like that. Um, that being said, uh we want to make sure that we can try and provide as much relief, as much information as possible. Uh, if it's anonymous, um, you know, you can create an email account and and not give us your name. Just give us the information, that's what we find. Um, but anything that we can do to help traffic-related situations and incidents in township, I think it's going to be beneficial. Um, it is one of our number one complaints in in township, has been. Um, because there's a lot of people that are really impatient and uh just really don't abide by rules of the road. Uh, and we're trying to, we can, uh as an apartment, to address those kind of complaints and 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 resolve them. So again, I'll push this out through our Facebook page, I'll push, put it on the township website under the the PD um section of the the page. But uh if anyone has anything, uh you can always call us too, even if you forget the email address, it's something to hold us. Uh, we're happy to uh to listen, to talk, or to see what we can do. But uh I thought that was a great idea. I just wanted to share it with the board, and it just came through really today, it's brought to my attention today. Which is why I think this is news, Jean doesn't even really know this, so. Um, but uh that's my report for this month, and uh I think it it shows that I should probably start marketing uh meetings all the time now. I don't think Bob should really jump me in any way. I need a father, Bob.
Chief Dean, what is the fire department?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Neil. I wanted to report about the daily questions. There's a couple of things that I would like to highlight with that. Well, being, we currently have a burn ban in place, which is going to continue through April thirteenth. Um, and things keep going as we go, and we will be lifting that at April thirteenth. But this is exactly what I want because we can go, we get rain, then we get very windy days like today. And it dries up everything that we've had, so we're finally getting to get saturated here. Um, and this has been the fifth driest first quarter of the year. We're like three point seven five inches behind according to the National Weather Service and what they take for that. Plus on top of it, we're still on this with drought watch, reverse counting and surrounding counts. So if things don't change, even though we might get some rain, you might see this rear suddenly head again that we put a burn ban out there once. Um. Because we're being limited on doing training and other things down at the train site due to the drought. So I started to question when this starts affecting how we train. Okay, how it's going to affect everyone else, and plus part of our job is fire prevention, I consider a burn ban part of prevention. Because it definitely has cut down on things here in township. Um, yeah, I think with the the report, I'd like to mention benefit of having staff here twenty-four seven. The uh not the most recent structure part of Lebron, but we're here in the township on Flinbridge, twenty-fourth Flinbridge. We were there in under five minutes, made a good save, made a good hit. Um, no injuries, and saved the house. So quick response made a big difference in what was left with. Um, and my guys were a part of the Robinson Township double fatality. Um, and I will tell you, as far as that is, we were our engine or tanker were one of the first readings unseen, both of which are suppression guns for that location. That was on Route Ten, very best turkey hall. Right, it was in Turkey, Robinson Township. That point is we were in, but we had people here. Just like spring comes to us, wind missing comes to us. We sort of go to other places too, and that was just one of the cases, even though I don't think outcome would have been any different. Uh, because it was well off when it was found. Um, it was one of those types of nights where conditions were perfect and then you smell smoke, but everyone was burning. The fireplace was still because the temperature dropped. Um, and actually, no, they got the right angle, seen the right, and everything weird inside of the head, they find that point to hold back the residents. So I thank you because I, the township residents are going to benefit from having people here twenty-four seven. Plus, we have people around us that are hopefully providing that to us, so. It's a benefit to have a quick response, get a order on the fire, and hopefully have no loss of life. That's still what's at fault. So if there's any other questions about the report, I'll have the the letter A, and I'll go on to the letter B and keep this moving. That being said, uh, letter B is I'm looking for a motion to consider pay applications totaling seven hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten four cents for the following contractors. Baldwin Incorporated, pay application ten, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and one cent. H V Fraser, pay application eight, eighty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. H V Fraser, pay application number nine, one hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. Vision Mechanical, pay application eight, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and equal three cents. Air Management, pay application five, thirty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, and Air Management, pay application six, ninety-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars, totaling seven hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. I need to pay all of the applications totaling seven hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Say it.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Batdorf.
Yes.
Mr. Dill now.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Row.
Yes.
Jean, I just thought, wait, I see a con and I'm proud of Jean's time and your field on on um how we're looking in terms of the fund, fund balance and and the progress so far. I guess both where we stand financially and then how the project's coming.
So now we're below seven million, uh so we're about halfway through the bond fund. Uh, in terms of the progress on the stations, things are going very well, you know, you anyone who saw the building during the day can see that the Polarex three now has a a real roof on it. Uh, and they were extruding other roof panels um before the big windstorm today, thank goodness. Um, in terms of um uh the the progress is going well, our big problem, the the problem child that we've had from the very beginning of this project, five years ago, Med Ed. Uh, and their uh lack of responsiveness, and and this will come up again in the not-too-distant future. Med Ed is being an incredible problem. They they lost our loading application three times. Um, and we've been through three engineers due to turnover on Med Ed's part. Um, we're going for another design number for uh temporary tower. It it's just, it's been really, really difficult. It, it's just, it's been really, really difficult dealing with MedEd. And I, I can't stress that, I know it sounds like I'm hitting on them as the big bad guy, but they are. In, in this context, they are. Um, it's been very difficult.
So question there, in your way of importance, Kelsey, are there carrots or sticks that we have at our disposal? And I guess there a duty that MedEd has to the township to provide a certain level of care or service? Is it there, like, anything we can get to the bargaining table of them, and it's how I think, anything we can do?
Yeah, it's called the PUC.
I, I think there may come a point, um, if, if we get down towards the end of the year. And we have some difficulties, we may ask the higher-level politicos to help us out. Right now, we're, we're working on a plan for temporary power during the summer. Or, uh, air conditioning, so, um, anybody ever painted and it's horribly humid? The, the paint doesn't dry in the same way as when the, the temperature and humidity are moderate. That, that's the kind of thing we're talking, talking about indoors. We're working on that, and Mr. Bill Miller attends the, um, fire, the construction meetings. We have a construction meeting every two weeks. We're on top of these things. I'm just giving you the preview that in terms of the timeline. It has been a consistent difficulty with getting answers from MedEd. Which are necessary to move forward at, at certain stages in the contract.
Yeah, you're right.
No offense, this isn't like our admin, this is the emergency.
I agree, none of that, no offense statement.
It doesn't really matter to them. Cause I have another situation at one of our other stations that we're dealing with, have released face there. And the quote that we got back was, no power takes presidents over low power. So I'm dealing with that too. So again, there's a, there's a contact that I have not through MedEd that I've been working with to hopefully expedite some of these things as fast as we can. But you're gonna see the building itself. Be more finished on the outside than what it's gonna be on the inside. Because some of these things that are due in September are things that have to go on the inside. That are directly connected to our power source. So you're gonna see the outside look more like it's finished, but it's really not, yes, more complete. So again, it's just been very difficult dealing with them. And tonight's events are not going to help certain situations because. I can tell you right now, up to 22 calls from 16:40, well, 15:45 this afternoon, the fire department alone. And now some seem to be repeats because people see stuff and it hasn't been taken care of. Well, I can tell you it won't be taken care of, cause it just looked, MedEd's site had us out, 164 people out. And the earliest time you're gonna see everybody or stories, 2300 hours on Thursday. So just as a heads up, that just came from the MedEd rep that we deal with that covers our area and the surrounding municipalities in this county. Uh, so that being said, I think, I think Kelsey had something to say in regards to Andrew's question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was mostly answered, I don't think there's much you can do right now. I think at this point, we just have, even though they're being difficult, we just have to keep doing what they're asking and submitting what they need to submit to get to the point. Where things get approved and we get what we need. But ultimately, if it becomes, if it gets to a place where we need to go with change, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I guess what I mean is, if there's like financial damages that like they're causing as a level of their negligence or some kind of that, is that, are we in that situation?
Not, not yet, they're, they're in such a strong condition under being a tender PUC company, right, literally. The biggest thing is, we have to get some things done here. And once we have those done, and they're cut, carved, and issued, that's gonna be critical that we don't sit four, six, eight weeks. More together service, but, cause they need that cut card. That's the most important piece of the MedEd puzzle, is they need that cut card. So again, the PUC, I can't stress that enough.
Yeah, they're under the PUC.
It's like Verizon.
It's all nearly popped.
Yes.
Jim, with the last instruction, you, that you'd be available, if any of the commissioners want to, uh, do a tour.
You know, I, I'll let this. Yes, if someone, anyone, like to walk through. At some point, we'll schedule a time when they're not working. Because right now, there are so many trades going on in there. You have to be watching everywhere while you're walking around. Need to walk a, a couple of people through, and I can do it at different times. So it doesn't need to be all at the same time, where we go out there and explain what's on paper. And now what's in, we'll, 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 we'll be around. So please, we know, available most nights of the year, most days, just around some times when you're available, cause I get to get at a certain time. And I can take people through. I'd rather not take some of the public through due to insurance reasons at this point, but obviously. If someone approaches me and let me talk about it from the outside, but like daytime is very busy right now. And they're actually working to get the roof currently on. Uh, as long as you don't have, what, we have 60, 70, I don't know, it's today, I don't know what it's taxed out of that, but I know it was a lot. That the roof's gonna be actually done. That would be, without penetration, so I don't have to actually do this later, so. But yes, that's there anytime. Anywhere to these projects, if you wanna see something down there, you let me down. And, you know, you know, hard hat and vest, go for a walk. Just say, we're all huge, cause they're gonna come back money, I guarantee you that.
Uh, another question, has any discussions gone on with, uh, any of the contractors? As it relates to the recent spike in building materials and, you know, questionable availability of materials and how it'll impact the project?
Since the fire project was big, right? They're locked in the numbers. They're locked into numbers, equipment, and everything in respect, catch sheets, the whole nine yards. So that's already built into the contract. Just cause stuff, stuff spiking and doing some, they're leaving this back on the bit, that's why you can contract. There's also some building numbers in that. For emergencies and change runners and not covered, it's a new paper, you should find a piece of wood. All of our stuff that we've had to adjust is all depending on this within the contract. Uh, and then some being credits. So I think we're looking very good right now, uh, but it's not totally finished. And just had this storm come through, it could have reached a lot more havoc, but. It's a brick and mortar building, that's why we're going that way. So it doesn't blow away. But hopefully that answered your question, I hope those things. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Bill Miller, for that reminder, by the way. There's a lot been going on. Last item on here is the city fire commissioner's office has a grant out there that's just opened up. For, for you, like, the application period, like that advertising part's out there. It's called the municipal fire department cap program permit. Where to apply for this, you need to have a career file, which we have. Uh, and to be ready, it's upwards of 25 to 100,000 dollars. So we're gonna apply for this grant, and this is more of a FYI, we're giving lackers some money. And primarily looking at some of the furniture and stuff like the training room, items for in the station. Potentially even some of the fly movement. I had some correspondence with the chief, and they got a word of it back-to-back years, that they can say that, like, we can do this next year. Again, um, now that we're at career staff, we're always holding this grant out there, collecting lackers, stuff like this. They had certain parameters, but I think we beat it because. Um, one of them is establish or modernize facilities that house firefighting equipment, this is the next we get, spot for establishing, start out there. Uh, so I'm gonna throw it at it, hopefully we can. You know, with Jean or Kelsey, but.
Yeah, you can make a motion off, right?
I'll make a motion to, hopefully I'll, I'll place the application for granted.
I'll say.
Mr. Bador.
Yes.
Mr. Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Ral.
Yes.
All right, and thank you. And hopefully we end up on a positive, because there's no other questions, even if she'll move.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Jean, I felt a lot of off of it there for you.
First of all, I wanted to start with, I, I was, I was actually out and about when the, the wind kicked up this afternoon. Um, that was quite interesting. Um, I, I myself made some calls for various limbs down, roads blocked. Uh, talked to public work, I talked to police departments, particularly officers in selling. Um, and I, uh, the admin staff, we sort of activated emergency management procedures. Even though it wasn't a, a, a declaration of disaster emergency, took a lot of calls from residents, passed those on to. Public works and emergency services, so everyone worked together really, really well. There were a lot of calls coming in, that was, uh, quite an interesting, uh, episode. It reminded me vaguely of the tornado, uh, the hailstorm back in 2016. Um, without the hail, so everything else was there. So thank you, um, both, uh, emergency services departments and public works. Uh, of course, it, it whipped up right at public works was going home. So they had all been called back. Uh, in regard to the code's report, uh, one thing I would note at the top of page three is the Flintbridge fire. That home was placarded, however, that home, uh, because of the quick response was in better shapes than some of the. Home fires that we have had, and the structural fires we've had. Uh, so hopefully that, um, home can be repaired, like the 45 Cary Avenue home. In regard to item B, uh, we need a resolution from the board to appoint a treasurer and, uh. Reappoint myself as deputy treasurer, our treasurer, the, uh, Kristen Yoder. Um, and she is here this evening, if you have any questions. And, um, this is, uh, a requirement under the first-class township code. And both the treasurer and the deputy treasurer are bonded. And we've received, uh, bonds for both of us. So I'm requesting a resolution for that appointment.
Any questions? The resolution, I know it moved to dissolve, that our resolution. Appointing as the, as treasurer, as chief treasurer and deputy.
I'll say, she's the treasurer, I'm the deputy treasurer.
Whereas the, um, treasurer and you, uh, re-appointing as the deputy treasurer.
Thank you. Oh, I just, I thought I'd hear. Mr. Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bador.
Yes.
Ms. Ral.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, the next item is banking. When you have a change in these positions, whether it's the president, vice president. Um, secretary, assistant secretary, treasurer, deputy treasurer. Um, those are all the individuals authorized to, uh, the party to sign checks. Um, as, as the board, they know, Pope may not know, three individuals are required to sign checks. Um, we have to have the so-called signature cards with the bank thing. And, uh, I need a resolution authorizing an update to the signature cards so that we can execute those.
So, second.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bador.
Yes.
Mr. Donell.
Yes.
Ms. Ral.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item, um. The next item concerns the administration of the non-uniform pension plan. I'm not talking about staff here. So with pension plans, the, the monies are housed with an investment company. Makes various investments, but there are also, uh, various administrative tasks that need to happen. With both the police pension plan and the non-uniform pension plan. Uh, such as issuing payments to retirees and then sending those retirees a 1099R. Uh, so that they can file their tax returns. In regards to the non-uniform pension plan, the administrator, in other words, that entity that sends the payments out and issues the 1099R. Is changing, if the investment company is not changing, that's a, a whole other procedure that would require. The board's involvement, advertisement, this is strictly, uh, changing the administrator of the plan. From Nationwide as the administrator to, to Charles Schwab, the investments are not with Charles Schwab. We wanna make that clear. There have been some difficulties with the current administrator. So the investment trustee Gerard is recommending a change to Charles Schwab. And this would be to authorize the, assign the appropriate warrant.
So, second. I have to, makes sense to me, I should say. I have to withdraw my second.
Yes, you have to abstain, yes.
I, to clarify, due to potential appearances and conflicts of interest with my employer, I am not allowed to vote. On motions with regard to pension, so I withdraw my second, and I will abstain from voting.
I'll say. But we know that Mr. Donell abstains, uh, and Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bador.
Yes.
Ms. Ral.
Yes.
Thank you. In regard to the next item, uh, the board may recall at your last meeting, you authorized me to find the insurance coverages for the township. These are liabilities, the umbrella, inland marine, auto, workers' compensation. Um, what, uh, various types of liability and, um, cyber coverage. Uh, we were, I did find coverage, our due date falls between our meetings on April 13th of every year. We, uh, experienced a 7.1% overall increase in the premiums for all of those types of coverage. Um, of course, it never falls evenly, uh, the, different types of coverage increased, a couple of them even decreased. Uh, but to give you an example, um, our property limits were increased, that does not have to do with the fire situation. That has to do with the cost of, um, if, if God forbid this building burned down. Um, uh, we would hope that the fire department would get here quickly. But if this building needed to be reconstructed, they take into account up-to-date costs of what it costs to reconstruct a building like this. Um, so those limits increased. Um, and that was probably the steepest increase of all the, the different coverages. We, uh, auto increased a bit because we had, um, over 80,000 dollars of losses in our last year of experience. Um, in regard, we had, uh, in regard to workers' compensation, we still have a workers' compensation mod factor of less than one. But it did creep up, so that increases it incrementally. Oh, so overall, the increase is 7.1%. I am, in going over this with our insurance agent, which is the H and D. Uh, I'm satisfied that I understand why those increases occurred, but it's especially in regard to property increase. This kind of goes back to Mr. Greg Miller's inquiry a little while ago on the availability of materials. And increased prices of materials. I'm glad that we hit the window between COVID and now, in regard to building the fire station. Um, but going forward, one would anticipate, one does not need to be more in bucket to anticipate. That building, a building going forward is going to be a more expensive proposition. Not, not just inflation, uh, the tariffs, of all kinds of factors entering the market.
Yeah, playing ahead for the, on the bill. When the police car was hit, wasn't that the form of the person that hit, hit the car and not township?
Yes, uh, but we also had other claims, we had, uh, uh, several deer stripes. Uh, we had one, um, um, unidentified, uh, motorist that knocked down a 13,000 dollar streetlight toll. Unfortunately, when MedEd built a highway, the streetlights along the highway, which are about, uh, about 35 feet high, they're, they're pretty big, 30. they're, they're pretty big, thirty. Um, those are, are the responsibility of the municipalities. Also, they do tend to be car magnets. I don't understand why, and I'm not kidding, they, uh, it's a problem. Um, so that's a totally uncovered cost.
Um, the person who hits a streetlight, would they, their insurance don't get to pay that?
There were two streetlights that we had replaced. One we identified, the other one got a A.
If we don't always have, it happened a lot of times, guy grilled, uh, street signs, which are relatively cheap and then and, um, street lights and some traffic signals. If you don't have a responsible party here, here. Uh, we had, if you remember a couple of years ago, some, somebody whacked that, that box that gets older. That was, I believe, eight thousand dollars. That happens sometimes.
And there are other various costs with different types of claims other than auto. But I'm satisfied with, um, the coverage, um, and, and how we found the coverage. E H and D is also working with the fire department on, um, there's, uh, uh, types of discounts associated with having a career fire department. Uh, so they're working with us on trying to, um, see what kind of a discount we can get for that. And also we have a certified safety committee, which is a five percent discount off of the workers' compensation premiums. Um, so if the board has any questions, I can email to the board the, um, the summary of coverage. It, it has actually quite a bit of detail in it. If you're interested, I can do that. Um, and, uh, you can give me guidance if you wish us to, um, continue to get other coverage quotes. Uh, my reputation would be to stay with what we found. The next, you may be tired of hearing me talk this evening. I'm afraid the next one, um, uh, I need a few minutes of discussion. Most people in this room are familiar with the, the former Titus Power Station out at Poplar Neck. The road that goes back, and when you're going to the Titus Station, you have to turn off of seven twenty-four west, um, onto Poplar Neck Road and adjacent to where the old vineyard trucking is, okay? When you go back there, to go to the Township's yardway site, you have to pass over the Poplar Neck Bridge over the Scoopam River, which is the longest and is simply owned elevated structure in Berks County, I'll have you know. Um, and, uh, previously, there was another bridge. If you continued straight west, you would go past the way station for the landfill. And there was a bridge over the railroad that led to the Allegheny Scrap Yard. That bridge was removed in twenty sixteen because it became non-viable. The, it was going to fall down on the railroad tracks and the township had to remove it. The township then bought a piece of land where the yardway site is currently located and the driveway through the Titus Station property, which at that time was owned by a different entity that owns it now. The entity that owned it at that time had several different names, N R G, S I D, Reliant, but it was all the same company under various names. The township bought that piece of land and the driveway, and the, the new driveway became Poplar Neck Road just through a different route. We vacated the old portion of Poplar Neck Road that led to a bridge that was no longer there. And we adopted the driveway as an extension of Poplar Neck Road. That new, so to speak, Poplar Neck Road goes under the railroad tracks, and there's a trestle bridge there. At the time, um, we did all of this work, um, the P U C had a hearing actually out in the field and met with us out in the field and the railroad. And, um, it was an administrative, the P U C governs railroad crossings, whether it's a bridge on, over the, over a road or, uh, the road going across railroad tracks, it's all governed by the P U C. Um, and don't try to reason that out. It just is what it is. Um, at that hearing, they said, oh, we will do a swap. We're eliminating one crossing, in other words, the bridge over the railroad, and we're adopting another crossing. The road under the railroad. And I filed the appropriate applications to the P U C on behalf of the township. Last week I got a call from, so this was twenty seventeen that this application was submitted to the P U C. I got a call last week from the P U C saying that they couldn't do a swap. They needed the township to withdraw the twenty seventeen application and re-submit the application. Um, now, why am I telling you all this? Normally you would think this is just a bunch of paper pushing and, uh, doesn't need to be spoken about in the meeting. I do not need a motion. The reason I'm bringing this up is, it will probably appear in the Pennsylvania Bulletin, which is the, the official publication of the state for various actions by the state. And it may even appear in other, uh, publications associated with the P U C. And I don't want the board thinking, oh my gosh, what's this new road? It's not new at all. It's nine years old. We're, uh, just cooperating with the P U C and taking care of this piece of paperwork. Uh, I have called the current owner of the Titus Station to tell them that this, they may see this appear somewhere so that they don't think we're taking action against the property owner without notifying them. We're not, we're not abandoning Poplar Neck Road. It's simply, we're trying to take care of the P U C's paperwork problem. Um, so that's all I'm doing is letting you know that we're, we're taking care of this issue. I hope I never have to speak to you about this again. If you do have any questions about, uh, the area back there, please, uh, let me know. The, the third, there is a third bridge that is not owned by the township. It is our understanding that the current owner of the Titus Station will be working on, uh, with a grant replacing that bridge, which will be very, very important for redevelopment of that entire area. Um, because now that we took care of the bridge that we removed, it's no longer a hazard. Hopefully take care of this paperwork problem, uh, that the P U C has generated for everyone. Uh, then if that third bridge is replaced, that would be the, the last choke point, if you will, for the redevelopment of the two hundred acres that are associated with Titus. So thank you very much for listening. I don't need a motion from the board.
Just a question regarding that whole area back there, um. If you go back there, once you get past like, uh, I think it's the four, you know, on the map. Anyway, once you go right past the eggplant, there's a bunch of signs like placarding that say like, no, you're not allowed to drive here. My understanding was that, that, that's not, uh, probably, that road is, is not private, you know? Like we have, we leave it at the range back there, the village.
No, but that is, that, that is a private road. Once you get past Allegheny Scrap Yard, that is a private riding way. Now, there, there's an attorney in the room, and I don't know what all the, the legal names are, but there is a proscriptive easement for various entities to get back to their properties, but it's not a public property. Is, is that what you call it?
Yeah, it's proscriptive easement, yeah. So that they can access it, because otherwise they have no other way.
Other way, yeah.
Correct. You know, uh, it, could a property owner, to the property owner, prevent someone from going back there? I think then they would have a fight on their hands because there's, uh, there are two sub-stations back there. There are billboards back there that require regular maintenance. The railroad has to get back there. There, there are, uh, we counted, I think at one point, thirteen different entities have to get back in, into that area.
But none of them have a proscriptive easement. That's actually recorded, right?
I have no idea what's recorded.
Yeah, I don't know either, but technically they should be, um, uh.
No, we have a license agreement from the property owner allowing us to get back to the pistol ring. And I should hope that it's to the property owner's benefit to have a lot of police officers with guns around, you know, helping to keep the place secure. Uh, and there are other police departments that use our pistol ring. How many use our pistol ring right now?
Five, five different venues, to include state.
Good answer.
So, uh.
To clarify too, I do like.
Uh, the area back there and, and when, and I hope it's a when, not a if, it comes to redevelopment of that area back there. The access issues will be complicated. Um, there, there will, there are probably some things that are recorded, some things that are not recorded, some things that are recorded that aren't very well defined. If anyone's looked at a very old deed, you've probably seen from this rock to this oak tree. It's probably that kind of stuff. We're talking really old, old deeds and rights away. Um, and, and of course the tune trail is there, which was an old railroad bed. They got transferred over to Scoopam River Greenway. So there, there is, it's complicated, that kind of issue. Yes, I, I think if everyone is motivated enough and the plan is good enough, I think they will make it so. Thank you. Um, in, in regard to planning items, uh, Taco Bell is coming to Kimer Township. Uh, this plan, uh, you may recall, we talked about this quite a while ago in twenty twenty-four. It went dormant for a little while. I'm not sure why. Uh, that may have to do with Taco Bell's internal machinations. But now we're finally at the point where they have, um, gotten all of their ducks in a row. The last item that we need is for the board to adopt a resolution authorizing administration to forward the sanitary sewer planting modules to the P A D E P. It will connect out front, uh, so for everyone's education, the Taco Bell would be going where they sell the, the plants and flowers out in front of where the alleys is, right there where the tents is. That's going to be Taco Bell. Um, and that connects to the sanitary sewer out front in Lancaster Pike. So I, we would need a motion from the board commissioners to adopt that resolution.
Some motion, I'll second.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Badore.
Yes.
Mr. Danell.
Yes.
Ms. Rau.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the next one, very similar. You've heard us talk about this before, nineteen seventeen Cedar Top Road, two lot subdivision. The property owner was very cooperative with the township when the township relayed the sanitary sewer in Cedar Top Road. The property owner got right on it and connected up the two new lots. The paperwork was lagging behind, so, uh, now the paperwork is finally in, in a package together and we need a similar resolution authorizing administration to forward the sewer planting modules to be, be for those two lots.
So, second.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Badore.
Yes.
Mr. Danell.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Rau.
Yes.
Thank you.
Quick question there.
Yes.
So I can see in the, in our reminders, the application number eight thirty-one is for the same property. It's the, uh, the fence, a variance for a fence. Because I'm just curious how this might affect the subdivision of new dwelling and new occupants. Is there any, any impact? Is it worth considering?
No, they're, they're, they can be mutually, considered mutually exclusive. The, the, the lots are already recorded and, and sold. Now the, the individuals would like to put a fence up. And it, this is really very straightforward with the fence. It really don't, it, these two items don't really interact with each other. Um, and, uh, I, I have no idea, um, I haven't really looked into this. Don't even very application, so I really can't express an opinion on it. Or I'm very familiar with the area. Anybody who drives Cedar Top Road, this is on the infamous Chican, the S-turn on Cedar Top Road. Um, this is at the bottom of the S-turn, uh, where this new home is located. Uh, thank you for, uh, connecting the dots there. Um, in regards to the, the next item, uh, Posh acquisitions, this is a very small subdivision up in Farview. The Farview area of the township is the area behind the B N S going up the hill and called Summit Avenue for a reason, up to the Birdland in Wyman Street, uh, near where the Water Tower is up there. That's called Farview, that whole area. Um, and, uh, this plan creates two new lots. They also have to extend the sanitary sewer system. They have to extend the sewer main. Um, this, if, they have not recorded their plan yet because they are getting together their developer's agreement and their letter of credit for the sanitary sewer expansion. This is just simply, um, asking the board to reaffirm final approval of that plan, subject to resolving these issues such as the letter of credit and the developer's group.
So we, we, we do have the, we've talked about this one several times.
Yes.
So nothing has changed with regard to their, their actual plan. It's just reaffirming.
Correct, right. Nothing has changed with respect to their plan. In, in fact, um, we've been, yeah, part of it, uh, was already purchased by a new owner and it has been reminding them, hey, you can't build your units until they expand sanitary sewer. So that has kind of lit a fire under, um, the matter.
I, I'm gonna reaffirm.
I'll second.
Mr. Badore.
Yes.
Mr. Danell.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Rau.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, uh, thank you for letting me speak for so long.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, moving on to the end, your first report, thank you for asking.
Uh, just an update on the, uh, Sensit Townhouse apartment elevators. We've been assisting the township code, uh, office on this subject matter. We received a complaint that were the apartments, they have two elevators. One wasn't operative and the other one was operable, but it was having problems and leaving residents stranded or having to use the stairwell, which, which posed a problem with, uh, emergency services and the fire department. They had a call. Our office did prepare a letter back in February of this year, February thirteenth, to the owners of the Sensit Townhouse, putting them on notice to have these elevators, uh, operating. Uh, we, since then, we have had some correspondence, uh, from the owners and they did receive free bids uh, for elevator modernization. Uh, currently, uh, we're helping out the township as well as, uh, owners to have this matter resolved so that both, at least one al- al- elevator must be operating at all times. However, they will, uh, correct the one and then once the other one's corrected, it's operable, then the other one will remain. Uh, uh, will be also repaired. This has been an issue. A lot of residents have been, uh, that complex have been complaining to, uh, the county commissioners. We just want to let the commissioners know that we're assessing this matter and hopefully it'll get resolved within, uh, next few weeks.
That's a pretty big building, like.
It's, it's the tallest building in Kimer Township. It's ten stories, two hundred apartments. It's subsidized a lot, but.
I believe, and, uh, it, it became a burden, but well, actually one of the residents, I believe, had some medical issues, uh, trying to, um, uh, take the stairwell. So this has been an emergency services issue and a safety issue, so hopefully we'll have this matter resolved.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was going with that. It seems like quite a serious safety issue. If, if there's no elevators in eleven-story buildings, somebody has, has an emergency. I guess just, I think what I'm hearing is that there is progress being made, if not.
Yes, they finally did, uh, obtain three bids. They're actually in the process of reviewing them from a company to, uh, correct or, or fix the elevators. So hopefully this will happen, uh, very shortly, uh, that this matter can be then resolved.
I will say, Joe, just for the board's, that, teach, there's nothing more heartwarming to me than management and the owner's company representatives get stuck in the elevator and we have to get rest. And I'm not making that up. I think that's why there's some action here. These elevators are original to the building. I've got to send a better perspective. We've been working on this for probably, well, Scott, I'm sure addressed it.
Scott, I'm sure addressed it. I addressed it way back with the old management company, the older ones. Then it just falls on deaf ears until obviously something drastic is gonna have to take place. Meaning either you do something or you find a place to put two hundred people, the problem is.
Or you're gonna have to vacate the building because it's gonna be deemed an unsafe.
Unsafe, unsafe structure. But I think Jean had mentioned about, there's so many different types of funding and people in that building. It's not, I think it was meant to be retirement luxury apartments for retirement people. It's far from that, but that, there's people in it that count themselves. So, as Joe said, we're working on this, but I just wanted to give everybody that sort of feeling that when you show up and somebody says, hey, there's somebody stuck in the elevator that when you open the doors, it's somebody who means something that did whatever the service message back to them because that leg got stucked. And, uh, that's their main means of access to any information. Uh, just. So, I, I guess you made the situation even more, I guess, alarming to me, given that this thing has been going on for quite a long time. It sounds like, I guess, knowing that. Is there anything we can do, Kelsey? I, I mean, what is at our disposal to incentivize action if it's not happening fast enough? Can we sanction them? Can we have our codes enforcement officer there? Or is there those sorts of activities yet?
Yeah, that would be something that codes could take up and even an unsafe structure, if there was something that I can't see that would allow codes to block in the building and do that, but then everyone would have to leave.
That's not a question. Um, this, these are two hundred apartments. All of the individuals in this building are elderly and or severely handicapped in some way. Um, there, and usually both. Um, it, it is, now it is a building that is really the, the last resort of, of place of refuge for many individuals. And it's not a small thing to say everyone out. Where are those people gonna go? So, uh, Great Valley Consultants has been working with the township and we've been, uh, double, triple teaming them with fire department, um, to impress upon the management of this building that they, they must address this issue. The residents, to their credit and their families, have also helped the situation by calling the county commissioners who are, uh, and calling other, uh, we've gotten, I know that they've contacted Representative Houlihan's office and state representative's offices and Senator Twain's office and, uh, has put a lot of pressure on the management of this building to, uh, finally address this issue. But again, it's, it's not a small thing. When you placard a building and everybody's out, where are people gonna go? And this is a particularly tough situation. Fortunately, it looks like we're heading down the path of resolving it. I know that Terry Nogalow, Great Valley Consultants and our codes inspector will be, uh, monitoring this to make sure that they follow up with this repair of these elevators. Keep in mind, this building, uh, was originally constructed in nineteen seventy three. These elevators are original to the building. All, uh, the three major apartment complexes in Coomer Township, the Governor Miblin Apartments, Shillington Commons Apartments and Sunset Townhouse Apartments were all constructed in nineteen seventy three. I don't know what it was with nineteen seventy three, but they really liked apartments in that year. Flying Hills was a, a little bit different. That evolved on a different timeline. Um, Sunset Townhouse happens to be the tallest building in Coomer Township. Um, and it, it also has to go through the, the government procurement, um, procedures because it's subsidized by HUD. So they had to get three bids. The first line they issued bids, they only got two. Now they got three, so. Yeah. So now they've finally been able to reward these bids. The main reason for bringing it up at this meeting was in case you, the board members, had gotten any calls from these other political representatives, I, I wasn't sure if those communications were occurring. And I also wanted to give, uh, Great Valley Consultants credit for helping us with this issue because, um, um, their letters really got this moving. Um, so thank you for that, Joe.
Joe, you know, the codes see the safety inspection reports for the elevators, but I think they have to be inspected.
Yes, yes, they were brought in. Also, they're gonna require a permit from the township because of the ADA accessibility, even though the elevators are inspected by L and I. There are certain elements that we will be looking at as well as the township.
How many elevators are there in the building?
Uh, two.
Joe, do you just, to whatever extent possible, the, so whether you have a timeline on this, this just re- leads to me like.
We, we actually received three yesterday. We did receive an email from the management company, which was addressed to, um, William Frye, or the township, as well as Terry Nogal from our office, that they did receive the free bids. They're in the process of reviewing them. And they'll, they're, they will then be awarding to a contractor. Um, so we are keeping after them, letting them know that, hey, this is very important and it needs to get addressed right away. So hopefully we'll have an answer, hopefully by this week, that they can proceed and have a contractor, uh, begin the, uh, repair work.
Once that begins, is it a long process or is it?
It should be that, but they will need to coordinate with L and I for the inspections. But I would assume that they notify them in advance that can be coordinated as well as with the township as well for any ADA, uh, accessibility reviews. Okay, thank you.
Kelsey, is there a less nuclear option than what you described, somewhere that's in between?
Sure answer is no. Um, it's either, you know, go after them and say this building is unfit. You gotta get out or give them the time and the help and the push that we need to get it done.
Okay, uh, the next report, solicitor report with Kelsey Frankhausen.
Frankhausen, but.
Let me say it again. Solicitor attorney, Kelsey. On the Frank, um, Frankhausen.
Um, so the only item that I have to discuss tonight is a request from the township's tax collector, collector, Betty. Am I saying it right? Diebold or Debold? Debold, okay, let's say that. Um, she's requested, uh, authorization from the board to consider allowing her to remit the county taxes that she collects through electronic A C H payments. So her duties and responsibilities as an elected official of the tax collector for the township is to collect the local county and school taxes and then eventually remit those taxes to each tactic and each tactic authority. Um, it's not uncommon for taxpayers to use the electronic payment process, but because she is an elected official of the township, the bank is requiring that the township provide a letter of authorization, um, for her to remit the taxes in that manner. I have no issue with it. There's no fees or charges associated with the remittance of the funds. Um, like you would see in a normal, maybe at a restaurant, they, they give extra fees and stuff or, or whatever through, through any business really. Um, so there's no fees and she's just asking for permission to do that. Um, I don't see anything wrong with it. But, um, I would say that there is, right now, there's dual control capabilities on anything that she does. So it means that the township, some of the township also have to sign off on any remittances. And I, I think that we should keep that in place with respect to the A C H payments as well. Um, but that's what she is requesting and, um, we would just need authorization from the board to write a letter to the bank saying that this is okay.
Good move to act a resolution, very significant since.
Uh, say, just ask a real quick question. Is that, is that a two-part question? There, there's two different parts to this. One, to do the A C H, two, to get rid of the dual signature.
We can at least just need the letter authorizing. I think, I, I mean, I think we can all agree that we wanted to get the dual and that would be sort of administrative.
That's kind of why I'm asking my question, just so to clarify my motion as, as you stated.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Backdoor.
Yes.
Mr. Denell.
Yes.
Ms. Rowell.
Yes.
Thank you, Asaya.
Okay, time to pay the bills. I hear a motion to pay the bills.
So I'm second.
That's where I can write. Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Backdoor.
Yes.
Mr. Denell.
Yes.
Bill Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Rowell.
Yes.
Uh, uh, correspondents, um, their board of elections has, uh, made some new polling places for Coomer Precincts one, four, and five. And they will be sending notices out to all the residents that are affected by that.
And they are supposed to send notices to registered voters at your last known address when you register the votes. Um, this process is not influenced by the township at all. This is on the purview of the county board of elections. If you're in one of those precincts and you have a question about where you're supposed to vote, I would strongly suggest calling the board of elections. The, the short summary is, uh, Coomer Precinct one, which is kind of the donut or tire around Flying Hills, is going to vote at the Heritage. Coomer Precinct four, which is Flying Hills, is going to vote at Yodunk's Church. The, the barn is no longer available for voting, the Flying Hill Barn. And precinct five, um, which is, was formerly at the Grace Church on Old Lancaster Pike, is going to vote at the Mosaic Church, which is the old Whiston Bakery. So, yeah. Um, which is at, at the very edge of the precinct. Um, again, if you have any questions, I strongly encourage you to call the Burke County Board of Elections, um, and to clarify any, um, questions that you might have. Thank you.
Jean, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that's been formally approved yet, right? I think Thursday, if I understand correctly.
Yes, the objection period, uh, ended on the eleventh. There, there are, there are, with these kind of notices, there's a period of time that, uh, somebody could raise objections. And all those objection periods for all three changes have now expired. So that now goes to the board of elections to approve, not approve, um, to take some kind of action. I, I know that the township administration has made a number of suggestions about. The problem is the county has to locate, uh, polling places in areas that are ideally within a precinct and are handicap accessible. And there aren't many of them. To give you an example, um, this is a favorite example. The board has heard me expound on this. Precinct seven, which is, uh, the area of Summit Avenue behind the V N S, that whole area up there. They have never, ever been able to vote within their own precinct because there are no public buildings in the Farview area region. They have to go to the church across from the Miblin Court on the seventh twenty fourth. Yes, and a long time ago, they had to go to one of the schools. Um, so, um, it, it, there is a shortage of polling places. And in some precincts, it gets very difficult to establish a polling place. There are also regulations that I'm not an expert in on there is a maximum number of voters in a precinct. And there are other, there are other regulations that come into play. Um, and, um, so that, that's one of the issues is, is finding these locations that are handicap accessible and have some kind of parking as well. That's, that's another issue that comes up with, uh, polling placement. So, um, it, it can be quite difficult for the county, but they are in control, um, of that matter. Thank you.
Okay, under, uh, commissioners, um, Greg Miller.
Yes, I just, very briefly, we had the open house. I know a lot of you attended that, um, for the economics during development giving six different stations. It was a very interactive type event. It was nothing formal, uh, in terms of like presentation or discussion or anything like that. The different stations had, um, different topics at them. So the first one was like the background, demographic data, things of that nature, that made sure that the consultants uncovered. Then you would progress on. I won't hunt through every one of them to bore everybody, but you progress on. Pick out your areas for development that you would see. There were some examples, uh, for folks that they saw, um, that could be potentially brought into the township. Um, there were, uh, a station where you could put your money in, say where you would invest and so on and so forth. Uh, attendance wise, we had approximately sixty people come. Um, they showed the results of the surveys that were sent out, um, which I think manually we took. And also some of the feedback that we got from the various developers, real estate agents, companies, big businesses, small businesses, stuff like that in the area. Uh, so long story short, it was designed to get feedback, uh, from the community and, um, a fair number of people came. And we got some good feedback. They're not gonna take that feedback, um, and bring it back, uh, in June. We're still, um, as you see, it's T V D on the date, but we'll eventually land on the date for the next, uh, meeting where they'll take the feedback that we received in addition to all the other, um, occult farming that they've done for data development and bring that back in and start making some recommendations.
I, I believe that this is the last week for the community's, or, or.
Sure.
Well, and I, I have a feeling that if a response slipped in overnight, it would go to waste.
Thank you. Uh, the next thing, ladies, I feel a little out of order. Patty, um, you wanna have a word about the Girl Scouts?
Um, the township has received a request, um, for a certificate for a young lady in the Girl Scouts who is receiving her gold award, um, that is pretty much the equivalent of an Eagle Scout Award on the board scout side. So, uh, it's kind of a big deal. And, um, the lady, uh, the person who's in charge of the Eastern Center has requested that, um, this young lady lives in Coomer Township and that we, um, give a certificate, um, you know, stating how, for her accomplishments. So I guess I, the approval that we can just.
Delay the motion. Second.
Backdoor, Mr. Backdoor.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Denell.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Rowell.
Yes.
Um, a question, Jean, before the executive session, you think we should, uh, the budget be fixed or?
We certainly can, uh, if the board would like. Uh, I do not expect any specific action out of executive.
Yeah, I, I'd say let's just get it over with. Don't even read that one.
We started the first week, early October last year, right? Well, that's what that discussion will be, I guess, in terms of why we should do it.
Right, that's my question. I'm gonna have three budget meetings, like we had for a long time. We're gonna have one budget. What are the plans for this year? So I guess I'll, I'll work backwards a little. When do we need to be done by, Jean?
Um, the first class township code requires an advertisement of the budget being available by the end of November with a minimum of a twenty day advertising period for its adoption in December. The ultimate, um, uh, adoption date for, um, a budget is December thirty first. But as, as you can see, the, you can't do the November advertisement, um, you, with that twenty day period. You really have to look at the December regular board commissioner meeting. The other thing is that, um, over the years, the county has shortened the timeline to notify them of, um, the villages for the succeeding year. So I strongly urge you not to go any later than the Dec- December third Tuesday needed.
I think we generally bill, I thought, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong. Do we normally do two in October and then if we need one, a third, if we had it in November, then we still have plenty of time to advertise.
That's a good general description.
It sounds a little bit on arrogant. As long as we're done by eleven thirty, we're good.
Yes, as long as I'm authorized by November thirty as to advertise a budget. Now, there are minor changes that can. Now, there are minor changes that can be made to the budget. Yes, Bob?
And I don't know who else is looking at the calendar. I don't mean to cut anybody off, but uh, November twenty-seventh is Thanksgiving, twenty-eighth is Black Friday. And November ends on, February is Sunday. I think we're going to keep that holiday weekend in mind, which is definitely.
We're gonna suggest that we actually start a little later this year, sometime after the fourth. My reasoning for that is, is the contested election this year. I want to make sure we have the right people table that are gonna uh have a purview to have discussions over the twenty twenty-six budget, because they're the ones that are gonna be administering it. Recognizing they may or may not have ability to vote on it, they should at least be able to sit here and ask questions to be treated like anyone else if they're coming. I totally disagree. They have no elected authority in order to do that. They want to be briefed. They've been watching YouTube or probably like all these other lonely folks that sit in the audience and work. I just, I just always said, they don't have authority, but they should be able to sit there and ask questions and issue concerns and that kind of thing. They should have a seat at the table after November.
That sounds nice. That, that, that's, that's nice, but the bottom line is that people want to know.
What, what's the objection to the people? I mean, it might be the three folks up here living very high, but should it not be? What, what's the objection to the people that were voted in by the residents of this township being included in the budgetary discussions of the township?
The hypothetical.
Yeah, of course it is. And I'm asking what your hypothetical objection is.
Is it because it's a hypothetical situation? I want to see exactly what, what's going on first. What, what we should have is a deadline for this. That's what we're trying to achieve right now. Bill, Bill and I, like I suggested, and Gene confirmed that we had two in October and one in November, we needed it now. If you want to put that one in November, or even if you want to put that, that's up to you. But if I want to sit one night and try to work out a twenty-four million dollar budget, it's five hours.
Well, I think we established that we wouldn't have to do it in one night, but what's not hypothetical is that the election is November fourth.
No, we haven't established that. We haven't established anything yet.
I think we established that we have until November thirtieth or.
That's an established deadline.
Understood. That's the deadline. That's, that's what I was saying.
Perhaps, perhaps this might be of help. The way, the way we have tried to do it in the past, I think we've been largely successful is when we, regardless of when you have the budget meeting, when we have um newly elected, uh, commissioners elect. We prepare materials for those individuals as the same as we prepare for um the commissioners. They do not sit at the meeting table such as this, or we do the in the round. But if they are in the audience, they're certainly afforded the opportunity to look at the same material and make comments. Um, yeah, so we, that's what we've done in the past. I, I, you know, I'm sure Bob and the other um staff would recall us doing that. And I would encourage the board to continue that tradition.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure anybody's allowed to um sit in and, yeah.
All right. I, I guess I'm just taking it, instead of having them sit at the, like, they could just sit at the table and ask.
They're not officially sworn into it for January.
That's correct. So they can't vote on it, but they should have questions and concerns and, and things that they might want to raise to discuss. Why not let the.
Yeah, where they sit would be up to the board. You tell us. I'm just telling you that we do prepare the same material for those individuals that we have available as someone would be sitting.
Yeah, I mean, you can easily have three meetings between November fourth and November eleven thirty.
Um, it's gonna have to be by November twenty-second because our meeting is December sixteenth and then we need to give the twenty days. And as Bob said, with the holiday in there, it's a little crazy.
We could have, have a calendar in front of me. Do you have one there? Twenty, so, yeah, I'm looking at the month of November. The first is a Saturday, so there's, the first full week is the third. I'm just gonna go Monday to Friday, third through the seventh, and the tenth through the fourteenth, seventeenth through the twenty-first. That's the third full week, which is the Tuesday when we have our regular meeting. And there it is, one more full week. So there's four full weeks. Um, but I think what you just said was, we would need to do it before the twenty-sixth. So that would give us four weeks, or three and a half weeks. But I mean, there's three weeks. If, there's four Tuesdays that we can do then, if we wanted to keep the Tuesday theme going. There's.
Fourth, you can't have.
Oh, sorry, not the fourth, yeah.
So we'll run into our township meeting at some point. So like Lisa and I were just kind of looking at her planner here. You go six thirteen and twenty on a Thursday and then, and all out.
And depending on progress, you will have your regular third Tuesday meeting. You could be finished by now. Yeah, it depends on how things go. So, uh, if I understand rightly, November sixth, November thirteenth, November twentieth for budget meetings, and then you also have your regular third Tuesday. So, um, perhaps the twentieth day not even be necessary if we do well.
Um, what time would we start this?
Anytime after six is okay for me or not, Andy's better than.
Would you like six or six thirty?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what.
And that's really up to the board. We will accommodate the rule.
And six thirty is fine with me. That's Andy's program.
Okay. Um, thank you for that discussion. Um, and just to remind you, when we're talking about rescheduled meetings, the May meeting is scheduled for the twenty-second, also because of the election primary, we're voting to recur in this room. So we had to push the May meeting back to the twenty-second. That's on the last page of your agenda. Um, before that, you also have an April twenty-ninth meeting, a fifth Tuesday meeting. And there will be um activity at that meeting. We have some agenda items already for that meeting. Um, folks, members of the public can, um, uh, planning items can occur. So, um, that meeting is necessary.
Okay, that will go into executive session.
Well, um, just for the minutes, we did have an executive session. We discussed a matter of litigation involving two twelve Virgin Boulevard. And we discussed two personnel issues, one regarding administration and the other regarding public works. And there will be no actions to be taken after that session.
I make the motion, Mr. Neil.
I'll say.